Thank you all for being with us this evening. I will like to open by asking Felix Gines if he would offer a prayer, please.
Pastor, give a long praise to us. Precious Lord, we thank you for this opportunity, for this great state of Mississippi. We thank you for all that you've done for us. We want your continued blessings over our city. Here we let it continue to bless each individual councilman, our mayor, and all the people and administrators who are here to do things that we do. Father, we ask you your guidance on all of our decisions that we make, as in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. And if Cecilia Dobbs Walton would lead us in the pledge, please.
Under allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we continue with our agenda, I would ask for a moment of silence. This is Pearl Harbor Day, 80 years later, so just a moment of silence, please. All right, all right, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Bood.
By Mr. Lawrence, second.
Second.
By Mr. Glavin, any discussion? All in favor? It's approved on a 7-0 vote. If the clerk would read the additions, revisions, substitutes, and so forth.
To the policy agenda, we're substituting item 4F, resolution approving the extension of a maturity date for the series since 2021 not to exceed $10 million. Adding 4G, a resolution granting minor subdivision final plot approval for 921 Cedar Lake Road. To the consent agenda, we're substituting 5Y, resolution authorizing renewal of time clock plus support. And to the routine agenda, we're adding a docket in the amount of $125,308.49.
Is there a motion offered to adopt the amended agenda?
Move ahead, amended.
Second. There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence and a second by Mr. Glavin, any discussion? All in favor? It's approved on a 7-0 vote for the clerk, thank you. That brings us to the mayor's report.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I would, of course, Pearl Harbor Day, we all remember Pearl Harbor Day, but we have a very special today and a very special person that needs to walk up from the back of the room to come join me, and that's Ms. Susan Hunt. And it is her birthday.
Happy birthday.
Look at her, she's being so shy. I'm gonna give you the microphone, but let me, let me, let's smile to see you. But this is just a... Okay, now we're gonna look at Vincent. I know, I know we're both gonna shed some tears today, but these are joyful tears. All right, I'm gonna read this, you ready? This proclamation, whereas Biloxi joins the rest of the nation in remembering December 7, 1941, as Pearl Harbor Day. And as we recall those who perished and those who avenge that day of infamy, it is also a day of thanks. Whereas, while the Japanese were a waking and sleeping giant, the Hunt family, Ruth and Skeet Hunt were welcoming Susan Deborah Hunt into this world, an indomitable force that remains us, remains with us this very day. Whereas today, we celebrate Susan's 80th birthday. Biloxi and many, many generations of its citizens, especially the children, are eternally grateful for her drive and passion for this city now and for, now for many decades. Now, therefore, I Andrew Fofogo Gilich, Mayor of Biloxi, Mississippi, in honor of her extraordinary dedication to and love of this community, do hereby proclaim the 7th day of December 2021 as Biloxi Susan Hunt Day. Martha, Martha. I know you want to say something.
I do.
Thank you all for being here with us.
Thank you so very, very much. Now I understand, Vincent, why you called me earlier this morning, asked me some questions. It is an honor to stand here today. I'm sorry, City Council, I didn't bring anything because I didn't know I was coming. I'm sorry. No bread. I'm sorry. It's a very special time as we celebrate Pearl Harbor, but yes, I am, I'm not really 80, okay? I'm 40. I'm very blessed to be a member of this community, working with children, and to be very active in the city of Biloxi. And thank you for all that you all do, all that you do. Thank you very much, appreciate it, and thank you for everything that you do. And thank you all for being here. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, let me say, let me say something, I want you to, I want everybody to Google the word "indominable" and what it says, "A Woman of Indominable Spirit." Google will tell you that, so, and look at what it means, somebody can't be stopped. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I know, guys, I asked you how you know it's my birthday. Now you know. Thank you.
All right, we love you all, thank you all for being here with us. Okay, and we had asked one more thing during this report, to spread the expenses of the Biloxi Travel Credit Card to the minutes.
Does that, does that include the roses?
Yeah, it does.
Good job. Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I think that's a P.O., anyway. All right, that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe we have any departmental reports. By the way, congratulations, Ms. Hunt. That brings us to the council reports. I'm gonna start on my right with Ward 7 and Mr. Barrett.
Just one thing, I would like to remind everyone that we have the Wool Market Christmas Parade this Saturday at 2:00 P.M. Know that several of the council members have already confirmed, but if you're planning on attending, I need to know so that I can let the Corvette Club know how many cars to bring. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. And Ward 6, Mr. Glavin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I may, I want to make a comment about something that happened right before Thanksgiving. I came into work and they told me about a coworker that was diagnosed with COVID, and I had worked close with this individual before that weekend that I came in, and I said, well, shoot, I don't feel bad, I don't have a fever, but I'm gonna go get tested anyway. And I went and got tested, and I tested positive for COVID right before Thanksgiving. And anybody out there, I know it's a personal decision to take the vaccine, I had the two doses, and I'll say this, I had very minimal effects of the COVID virus as I quarantined and stayed away from my family all through Thanksgiving, and it worked. I'm just, I just want to put that out there, if somebody's on the fence, my personal testimony, I think, if I, had I not had the vaccine, I probably would have suffered more detrimental effects. So I did want to include that in my council report today, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin. And Ward 4, Mr. Demming.
No report.
Ward 3, Ms. Newman. Mr. Gines, and Ward 2.
Yes, congratulations, Ms. Susan Hunt. I guess she's gone now. Those probably the fewest words I've ever heard her speak, ever in my life.
She's got a party to go to. She's coming back.
Yes, I just want to remind people that Wool Market's having a parade this weekend. We're having a War II Christmas Parade on the 18th, that'd be Saturday, 3 o'clock. And also, just like Councilman Glavin spoke of earlier, at the Frank Gruish Community Center, you know, if you would like to have a booster shot for COVID shots, we're offering the opportunity for those who wish to take a shot. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gines. And Ward 1, Mr. Lawrence.
You talking about parades? Friday night was probably the biggest parade we had in the city of Biloxi since they started it. That was huge. And they had to have, we all had, Popeye made a little speech thinking it was quick, nobody left. Crowds stayed there, watched all the dancers, they had a ball. But that was one huge event, Friday night. And then Saturday, they probably had like 33 decorated boats, which is a big step up at the numbers, and the people on the beach turned up, the same thing, it was a big crowd. Those two things, thank Rusty David for the boat parade, and thank Sherry Bell for working with the kids with the little parade Friday night, it worked out great. Two big events for the city of Biloxi. So we thank everybody for coming, and we thank the city for hosting these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Just want to check with the attorney, we're working on that noise ordinance? I didn't mean to say that so noisily, but...
Yes, we've been trying to get meetings scheduled with the county, their year-end is kind of tough, but I think we have something scheduled for the first part of January. We're gonna try to bring that to head with the sheriff. The sheriff is on board with what we're planning to do, so that's, we have a plan.
Thank you. Next thing I wanted to ask about the Insurance Road Show, are we any closer to doing something to meet and talk with employees? Maybe you don't see the need, I know that there was, I think, an email that went out to some employees with Maestro, that Maestro had some issues, I guess, getting folks entered in their database, or something along those lines. I think they've got it straightened out, but some folks had to re-enter data. But I just think it's an opportunity missed if we don't go around and talk with and educate our employees on this, this new third-party administrator and how things work.
Well, you know, again, we've, I've been taxing our accounting and HR with regard to things that we brought, you know, to be considered tonight, but also some growing pains in the switch, but yeah, we'll put that high on the radar.
Really? And Cy Easterling with Bank Corps South is more than happy to help. Question about the, I know that we get, I think it's two payments from the state based on the online sales tax.
Yeah, the use tax is what it's called.
Is that...
It's about 1.2 million a year, I think we've collected, yeah, 650 or something like that.
Right, and when do we get the next one? Is it the beginning of the year?
Six months, no, April, I think, isn't it?
Six months, and that...
Second and fourth quarter.
Second and fourth quarter.
And that, that money's used for...
Construct road and bridge.
Roads, sidewalks, I know there's some sidewalk work, I'm thinking of a spot between Travia along Irish Hill, between Travia and Veterans Boulevard, I don't know how many feet it is, but that'd be a good spot that would finish all the sidewalks there along Irish Hill. Okay, thank you. That's it, that concludes my comments. That brings us to citizens' comments. If there's anybody who wishes to address the council, we'll afford you the opportunity of three minutes, we'll cumulatively set aside 45 minutes, if that much time is necessary, to hear as many people address the council on the topic of their choice. When you're recognized, if you'd come to the table, the mic is on, you may need to get a little close to it, but there's also a sign-in sheet, sign your name and your address, and also state your name clearly so that the council clerk is able to get your name in the minutes. That being said, is there anybody on my left, your right? Mr. Miller.
Evening. Originally, I was here because I was moved by the Secretary of State about 3:59. With my understanding, she was gonna come to my [inaudible]. So I guess it's just more of a complimentary throw I wanted to throw is that I came in my second and first Friday this Friday, and thought it was exceptional. And I'm asking you to...
The city to continue to support Biloxi Mainstream, I really think they could use some help in some few areas, maybe some electrical plugs so they're not all running on batteries and lights. It was a very, very good crowd, I think I saw the mayor in the back of one of the rides. Second of all, I guess when the concession trailer is now gone, that's on Porter over there by the community center, not community center...
gazebo.
Gazebo. And, but yet, you know, we're still having problems with homeless, and I know that's across the city, but I just feel like this is vital to business. New people moving into the city, property values particularly in this area along the base and whatnot are just out the roof right now. And we have a choice to continue to move forward, to make changes as a city, to accommodate the people that are moving here from places as far away as California. It still breaks my heart that we allow particularly renters to park as many cars as they want on their front grass when they have a driveway. You know, we don't have to be as a city second best, we need to be first. And one way to get business is to look good. I have been very disappointed in the amount of trash that I'm seeing, particularly the ramps back there on Bayview, getting up on I-10. The one that's on the south side that you take to get back up north has not been mowed along the rails all summer, you can barely see them. There's trees down under the I-10 that have been down since the hurricane, and this is not a complaint, I'm just asking. Each one of you can help make a difference for people like me who live here that care about the city, and I want this to be my home. So I'm just, just asking you all to say, please help, I thank you, and everybody in the city thanks you, but remember, there's many layers on in this city, and it's very, very hard sometimes to get things done, so thus it takes a council person generally, whether it's your word or not, to make that difference. And we really, really appreciate your efforts and your thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anybody else on my left, your right?
Good evening. Robert Bones Bark, the mayor and city council, y'all doing an excellent job, and it's good to see y'all bring up a proposal on a new bridge, to look at all options, but one option I think we need to discard is a toll bridge. We are the richest city in the state of Mississippi. When a bunch of us got together and legalized gaming, not only did we save the Gulf Coast, we saved this state. And we should not be charging the citizens to go across the bridge, and y'all just talking about inflation and a raise, now you're gonna charge people to go, come across a bridge to come to go work. There's too much money out there. We've got an infrastructure bill in Washington, D.C. We've got an infrastructure bill in the state, in the state of Mississippi, and we got a 3% tax, my understanding is that's on the casinos for roads. And it's been $900 million that they have collected. Now we're gonna go put up a toll bridge, but what? No, we can't do this. We call ourselves One Coast? Let's be One Coast, let's everybody belly up. Everybody gets our money, everybody gets, some of them get money we don't even get back. We need $34 million, is my understanding. Yeah, that's a lot of money, but it's not. The governor came down here and gave away $65 million just about three weeks ago. Give $34 million to the city that's saving y'all and saving this state. I'd say I only got 10 seconds left, oh, it stopped, good, I got a two-minute warning. But anyway, think about it, it's great to have the options, but please don't tax the citizens of Biloxi, or the citizens of Gulf Coast, to build a bridge. 1,000% against it. Thanks for y'all's time, wish you a happy holidays and Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you, Mr. Bark. Anybody on, on my left, your right, wish to address the council? Anybody on my right, your left? Anybody in the back? Ms. Campbell? No? Yes, no? Yes, okay.
Well, I might be belaboring a point, but City of Biloxi Tree Committee Vice Chair, Carol Campbell, 347 Big Lake Road. We contacted everybody about tabling the proposed LDO revisions tonight, and I just wanted to remind everybody that we would really appreciate it if we could do that because our chair can't be here, and she has, you know, great command of the issues, and we'd like her to be able to speak on our behalf. And respectfully request that y'all please consider that tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Anybody else wish to address the council? Last call. Okay, that concludes citizens' comments. That brings us to the policy agenda. If the clerk would read the ordinance, please, item A.
Ordinance to amend selected sections of the LDO as it relates to the tree committee, tree permit, and tree protection.
I move it, I move it, we table it subject to call.
Right, I made the motion, Mr. Gines seconded originally, but that's, I'll do the same thing, I move...
Okay, we'll flip it, flip it.
I move that we table it until the January 4 meeting, that's the first Tuesday, it'll be a night meeting in January, that's January 4. Mr. Gines, I believe, seconded that?
Yes.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Comment? Okay. All in favor of the motion as presented? Was that any, any in opposition?
Aye.
Stand.
Is the motion to table it again? Is that on the table?
Yes, the motion is to table it until January 4.
Okay, I'm with you.
You're good then, okay. Well, that was approved on a 7-0 vote, thank you. That brings us to item B, if the clerk would read that item, please.
Ordinance to amend the zoning district map for two parcels of land from their current zoning from CB Community Business to Hospitality Business Master Plan for property located at 1845 and 1851 Beach Boulevard.
Thank you, that motion was made by Ms. Newman, and the second one was by Mr. Lawrence. Ms. Newman, comments?
Jerry.
What is, what is being proposed here is the approval of what we call a PD-HB, which is a Planned District Hospitality Business Master Plan. What it would do is, is next to the Shell Station on the south side of Highway 90 at Veterans, it would create a 16-lot village, like a vacation village where they would build single-family structures in there, and it is an overlay district. The question I was asked was, well, what happens if this gets approved and nothing happens? Well, with a PD, the ordinance says that if it's not built after two years, then I'm gonna bring the case back to the planning commission, the city council, to have the overlay district removed. So this went through, went through site plan review, went through planning commission, it was unanimously approved, and we would recommend approval.
All right, comments, Ms. Newman? Mr. Lawrence?
A question, how much trouble are we gonna have in getting that insured?
Getting insured?
Right, we never built the building on the sand beach like that before, pretty much that's what you're doing, so the insurance is gonna be a major problem for them, not us.
Okay, well, that would depend, I guess, on what insurance company, but they are building north of the seawall, which is allowed, so it is a project that would be allowed by the, by the ordinance and by the development standards.
But you're building individual homes here, you're not building apartments or motel or anything like that, you're building individual homes.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Right, so that's a total difference, each one of them people have to be insured, so if I'm asking you, how much problem, can they even get insured?
Okay.
Sitting on a sand beach like that.
Insured that are there. [inaudible] Beach is where it was.
Yeah, okay. Well, I mean, we don't, from our department standpoint, we don't dig that deep, I mean, that's a, that's a problem that they will have to address, you know, and I'm sure that that'll be part of their financing approval for this project, is to make sure that they can be insured, so if we, if the council approves it, then we'll let them move forward.
That's gonna be the biggest hurdle they have, is that building there.
Anything else, Mr. Lawrence? Mr. Demming?
Jerry, so this development, the planning district, what we're, what we're gonna call it, is it, is this a, would this be considered a residential district, or would, would short-term rentals be allowed by right?
No, the zoning is already correct for them to do short-term rental there as a use by right.
Okay, so we don't have to deal with any arguing over that issue?
No, they'll, they'll have to build them to, you know, to meet certain standards, and then we'll inspect them to make sure that they meet the short-term standard, but from the zoning standpoint, they're already allowed.
That's all I have.
Mr. Glavin?
How long has this property, it's been dormant since Katrina, right?
Yes, it has.
16, 16-plus years? It's exciting to see an entrepreneur take the risk to build something like this and invest in Biloxi. Rob Stinson, who I know is involved with the project, has many businesses along the coast that have been successful, and many of them are along the beach, so I think he's calculating what risk he's taken, and it's just exciting to see that, you know, waterfront property come alive.
Yes.
With, and especially with residential. So, yeah, I think we need to give it 100% support.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Barrett, comment?
I just have one question. This area, before there was like Kukos and Hotel, was right in that area, is, is this the only area that is south of 90, that, that Treasure Bay area, that is buildable currently? No, you have, I mean, Sharkheads and all that area. No, I'm saying that, I know that those are already there, I'm asking like, we're very limited on what's south of 90, where we can put structure, okay? So this doesn't set any kind of precedent or anything like that, that was a concern a couple of people.
We expect to have development right next door to this, but because north of the seawall, that's buildable area, south of the seawall is not, it's sand beach like Mr. Lawrence mentioned.
Only question I have, thank you.
I have one more, if you want me asking. Are they applying for any abatements for this property that you are aware of?
I'm not sure, but Brian Bowles is here, you know, he's the real estate...
He shook his head and then...
Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, any other discussion? I'm gonna sign them, there being none, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the ordinance as presented? It's approved on a 7-0 vote for the clerk, thank you. That brings us to item C. If the clerk would read that item, please.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning from neighborhood business to RM 20 medium-density multifamily residential for the property located at 1850 Pops Ferry Road.
I'll move it. Well, the motion was made by Mr. Lawrence, and the second was by Mr. Gines.
My bad.
I believe I got that correct.
Yes, second.
Uh, Mr. Lawrence?
I was gonna do it, so I'll do that.
Yeah, I believe...
No, that's good, you're good.
I believe you had made the motion on this for the first reading, to approve it. So you get to comment first, if you have any comments, or if you like, I'll go to, I'll go to Mr. Gines and come back to you. Mr. Gines?
No, I was gonna say, it had no problem. Yeah.
Right.
You're talking about C, right?
You're good.
Yeah. I think they just keep getting better and better with the deals they come up with. They keep upgrading this property, upgrading their homes, I think it's a good thing.
All right, Mr. Gines, anything?
I have nothing.
Glavin, nothing? Any, any other comments, questions, observations by the council? Mr. Demming?
Can you just, is this where the apartment complex is?
Yes, and all they're doing is, all they're doing is bringing the zoning into compliance with what they're building there. When Jimmy Lane had this property originally, he had the zoning changed to NB because he expected it to work out as commercial, but when that didn't work out, they're building apartments here, and they also are gonna be building apartments behind the Walmart Neighborhood Market, so they're just bringing the zoning into compliance with what they're doing there on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor of the ordinance as presented? Any opposed, none? That's a 7-0 vote for the clerk, please. That brings us to item D. The clerk would read that item, please.
Ordinance to amend the code of ordinance to address compensation schedule, pay rates, and dispersment of sick leave.
Thank you. The motion was made by yours truly, and the second was by Mr. Gines, I'll allow Mr. Gines to comment first.
One of the areas that I had a problem with was some of the pay, pay areas, I think most of the councils kind of worked, worked a little bit of that out, but I want to offer a amendment if I could, and the top four or five positions, I would like to see those equal. And I would like the Assistant Fire Chief to mirror the Assistant Police Chief, the Deputy Fire Department... the deputy fire department deputy chief salary to mirror the other one, the police side. So I would like to offer the amendment on that to make those areas at the top of the page.
All right, there's an amendment offered by Mr. Gaines. Is there a second?
Mr. Gaines, just to be clear, are you- you're just referring to those two positions where on one of them, the police department makes a little more, and then on the other one, the fire department makes a little bit more? So on those two positions? I'll second that.
Okay, if we could, for the clerk's benefit, can we identify those positions?
Mic down. Okay, gotcha.
We weren't going to tell you.
I need to call the numbers out for you. Okay, 82019, assistant fire chief, and the same to be the assistant police chief, deputy fire chief, which is 7320, and the four majors to make 73020.
Okay, Mr. Kerry, did you get-
That's it.
Did you get that? Okay. Mr. Demming has a question. He wants to be sure that he understands.
So they can be equal.
You guys some of them?
That one matches that, and that one matches that.
Yeah. I got you. Okay.
Was your question answered, Mr. Demming? Okay. Any other discussion on this item? Mr. Gaines, and then I'll make my comments. We'll open it up.
We're voting on the amendment.
On his amendment. Any more discussion on the amendment?
No more discussion.
Okay.
On my side.
Right. Any other discussion? All in favor of the amendment as presented? Okay, it's approved on a 7-0 vote. Kerry, you made a note of that?
Got it.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, did you get that? Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us back to general comments on this particular item. Were there other items? Are there any other comments, Mr. Gaines? I'll listen to other comments. I have concerns about the annual leave that we talked about, but I'd certainly like to hear other comments or questions that the council might have. Mr. Lawrence, anything?
I think we should stay the same way it is now. I don't see any reason for changing it. I really see what your comp is by changing it. I just think you should stay with the one day, not go to two days. I just think it should stay.
You're talking about the first day of sick leave being used or being charged as annual leave? To leave that the same?
Same as it was.
Okay. Did you want to offer an amendment to that effect?
This is all tied in one? You have to separate these, or what? Is this all one resolution? We need to separate them.
We could remove that. I mean, we're kind of taking these concerns one at a time. It may be easier just to remove it rather than amend it.
What I did is have a, you'd have it?
We discussed this in the workshop. I'll make a motion to strike the changes from section 15-2-8. Delete all references to 15-2-8 and 15-2-8 of section 1 and any revisions to 15-2-8.
I'll second that. Or George, if you want to second it, either way.
All right, so there's a motion by Mr. Demming to strike that language dealing with additional annual leave. That was proposed by the mayor. So there's a motion to strike it by Mr. Demming, to strike that language. Is there a second, Mr. Lawrence?
Second.
A second by Mr. Lawrence. Is there any discussion? Okay. We'll call for the question on the amendment. All in favor of striking that language related to annual leave? That's approved on a 7-0 vote for the clerk. All right, Mr. Lawrence, anything else on this particular item?
No, I'm in favor of moving that forward as far as the raises in it. I think that needs to be put on the table today. Okay, well, you put this in effect January. So I think that definitely needs to be passed today.
Okay. So, Mr. Gaines, any comments, concerns? Ms. Newman, anything?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Demming, anything?
Nothing to add but a comment. I think after five years of seeing the cost of living increases, especially in the last year or two, I think we're past due. We're financially able to do this, and I think it's prudent of us to do it now. Other than that, nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Mr. Glavine, anything?
I have nothing.
Mr. Barrett?
Just echoing what Mr. Demming said, commend the administration as well as the council for making this happen. It's long overdue, and hopefully it's something that we can continue to do on a smaller scale each year.
Now, the concerns I have is just the minimum and the maximum. It's a conceptual disagreement, if you will, but I applaud the effort. Mr. Mayor, I know you've worked on this hard, and I appreciate Mr. Lawrence sitting in on a couple of meetings with us and the support of the council on this. So I'm willing to support it as it is because our employees deserve a raise, but I would certainly like to come back to it annually, preferably doing the groundwork for any pay increase consideration prior to doing our budget workshops and just have it ready out there so we're not doing this late in the year that we could get it done and that piece could be completed to be considered when we talk about the budget in August every year. So, look like you said.
Let me echo a comment that, you know, I think as we've got this thing set up, you know, based on ground conditions in July, you know, in October 1, we can do the budget amendment to be implemented, you know, after things come in. No, you know, I have no issues with that, working this into an annual mode, given parameters that we see. We'll see six months, you know, before the end of '22 so we can actually look for the '23 FY year to put some things in place, given we can afford it.
The only other comments I have there, just a couple of things I want to note. And one involves COVID and early in the pandemic with first responders. And I think there was a federal program, and you could opt in or out with your first responders, fire and police and so forth. Just an observation. And I know because of that, we had some employees in the fire and police department. At the very beginning, didn't test positive for COVID, but because they may have been exposed in contact tracing, were told to stay home. And some of them may never have tested positive for COVID. Now, this is in the very early part when everybody nationally was trying to figure out what to do and how to do it, and everybody's trying to be fair. And I would, and there, as guidance from the CDC changed, there were circumstances where everybody didn't fall into that one category of, hey, I didn't test positive. I want to come to work, but you told me I can't come to work. You took a day, my first day of leave. You charged me annual leave thereafter. I used sick leave, never tested positive, wanted to come to work, I couldn't come to work, but I lost my sick leave, and I lost that annual leave. So that's one category, if you will. And then as this COVID and the guidance unfolded in future years, that raised some other circumstances. My understanding is, just in asking around and trying to understand it, is that there may be three or four different categories based on who was ill when, what the testing was, and so forth. And what I'm looking for is to try and be as equitable as possible. And particularly, I have trouble sleeping when, say, we charge, Mr. Glavine said, you can't come to work. He never tested positive. He's got to stay home for two weeks. He lost a day of annual leave. He lost sick leave. And sick leave becomes pretty important when you're ready to retire and can purchase some additional retirement time with that. So I'd like for us, A, not to forget that. It doesn't call for a comment or anything. It's just, I don't want us to forget that. I would like us to pursue that, and I think that bears some further research and examination.
If you don't mind, I'll add to that. You know, we've been tracking that religiously, but again, for some of the CARES Act stuff that we do, to reinstate, and I think you're asking for the possibility of reinstating some of that sick leave due to circumstances beyond their control. And I think we have the data, in essence, to look at that, and we will.
Okay. And I'd really like for us, if we could examine that and, I guess, make a decision on that so that this doesn't drag on. But just to bring some closure to that. The other thing is, and this was mentioned once when we were talking at the workshop prior to this meeting, was longevity. And just, I know it's still out there in the pay proposal that we were fixing to vote on. You, the pay increase, the percentages deals with the base salary.
The base salary in the schedule.
So you're not looking at your total compensation. You might get longevity. You might have gotten education. Is it EIP? Educational, when you were hired? We're not, so when you look at what that percentage is applied to, it's to your base salary rate, if you will.
That's correct.
But I'd like for us to bring closure to this longevity one way or another. Maybe we can do that in this next year. I hope so. I think we're all ready to do that. The only other thing is, I think it would be worth examining to have, for lack of a better phrase, an executive salaries compensation schedule or salary schedule for your directors. You know, how long you're here, what you're paid, and so forth. That's just a thought. It's, as my sister would say, it's just a stray electron. All right, having said that, any further discussion? If not, we'll call for the approval of the ordinance as amended. All in favor? None opposed? That's approved as amended on a 7-0 vote. Thank you. Thank you for listening to my comments. That brings us to, let's see, item E. If the clerk would read item E, please.
Resolution to deny a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning from its current district of RS 10 low-density single-family residential, CB community business, and RM 30 high-density multifamily to community business for property located at 2506 Beach Boulevard.
I would make that motion. I'll entertain a second. Second by Mr. Lawrence. This involves the property where the old Breakers used to be. It's just west or south and west of Grandview Apartments. It fronts the beach, and on the west side is Edgewater Park. And this property has gone through a couple of rezonings over the past number of years. And we have a gentleman. I don't want to steal your thunder, Mr. Creel. Go ahead.
Okay, well, the front part of the property is zoned correctly for an RV park. But what the applicant was asking for was that the remainder of the property be rezoned to CB so that he could build a large RV park here. When it went through the planning commission, a number of the neighbors came out to oppose it. And after much discussion, the planning commission agreed, and they turned it down 11 to 3.
Right. And I would tell you, I went to the planning commission, and there's really nobody in the neighborhood in Edgewater Park. They understand that because of the zoning, something's going to be located there at some point in time. Prior to this, there were apartments, and then after that, there was a proposal. And the proposal, some covenants were established that ran with the property to put a small hotel and condominiums or apartments there, and possibly a restaurant. And the neighborhood was fine with that. But they really don't want an RV park right next to them. I can't say that I would blame them. That's my comments at the moment. Let's see, the second was by Mr. Lawrence. Any comments?
No.
Open to any other comments? Anybody on the council have any questions or comments? Mr. Demming? I heard a sigh.
What's the history of this property?
Jerry, would you kind of rattle through as briefly as you can the history of this property? You know, if Ms. Hunt was here, she probably could have told us that when the programs landed at that site.
As we've already said, this was the location of the old Breakers Inn property, and it was destroyed by Katrina. It's been vacant ever since. It was owned by a gentleman named Anthony Lee. And Mr. Lee went through several presentations of things that he'd like to see happen on this property, and he never was able to make those materialize. I think the property actually went into some form of maybe receivership or something like that at some point. And Mr. Thompson has not acquired the property, but had he gotten approval, I think that they were in serious talks about it. So, and I do understand that Mr. Thompson and Ms. Snodgrass and Mr. McDonald that live in the subdivision are in discussions about some other things to go on the property. So they are talking.
Do I recall correctly, and I may not, that there was some litigation dealing with the covenants that had been established when Mr. Lee had the property working with the neighbors?
Well, that was brought up at the planning commission. Mr. Lee had agreed to some covenant restrictions, you know, that there would be a 10-foot wall. When this was being considered for the hotel and the apartments and the other amenities that were there, Mr. Lee agreed to some covenants with some of the neighbors in Edgewater Park subdivision that they would build a 10-foot wall between the two and that the structures being built on this property would not exceed a certain height. And the applicant, we understand from an announcement that was made at the meeting, was seeking to have those covenants removed by going through the legal process to get them taken off. And we don't know where that is. I don't think that's been resolved. But we asked Mr. Thompson during the meeting if he would consider building the 10-foot fence, and he said no, that he would go eight foot, but no higher than eight.
Additionally, I believe Mr. Thompson was asking for some variances in order to place more RV pads on the property, and this would put those pads closer to the property line.
That's correct.
All the way around. One question that was not asked, but as I recall, I think it was generally understood that the entrance and exit from the proposed RV park would be on Grandview Drive.
That's correct.
And with that entrance and exit there, A, it's a relatively narrow road. It's tough to get two lanes of traffic, one north and south on there. And the second thing is, RV vehicles, recreation vehicles, particularly, he said there would be no motorhomes permitted there that were older than 10 years old. So these things are 30, 40, sometimes 50 feet long. And if anybody is familiar with that intersection at Grandview and Highway 90, there is a turning lane about the length of a car and a half. So that RVs having to come in, and again, when they leave, So that RVs having to come in, and again, when they leave, have to swing wide to get into Grandview Drive, and then I don't know how they were gonna make the turn into the RV park. But there were, there were some things that were never clearly stated. That, that was just my, excuse me, my general thought. Anyway, back to Mr. Deming.
So it, in light of this information, are there not DOT or MDOT or, uh, city ordinances, fire department, public safety requirements to have a certain type of roadway for a certain development? Is that not a thing?
Yes, there are regulations about it, you know, that they would have to, it would have to be designed to make that wide berth. And, uh, this did go through DRC. DRC did approve it. City engineer sits in on DRC. So the site was approved at DRC, but they don't have the authority to sign off on it until after it's gone through the public hearing process and then comes back, so.
Does that approval, did that approval include the requested additional pads? So that would, I don't know if that affects it or not, but-
Those, those pads were to have been discussed at the Board of Zoning and Adjustments, which follows the planning commission meeting, but because the, uh, proposed development died, uh, de facto, it was removed. It was the only item on the, the BCA's agenda, as I recall.
That's correct.
But there were a number of variances that were asked for. And to my way of thinking, the more variances that are being asked for generally, the, the less it fits in with traditional zoning, I, I guess.
Well, with, with variances, one of the things that you have to prove is that you have a hardship, and that that hardship is not self-created. And when you have a vacant piece of property and you have the ability to design that park to meet the code, you, you can't go in then and argue that there's something peculiar about the property that takes away your rights to develop it any other way. It's essentially a self-created hardship if you design it to max out on the property and to not create any green space. But because the zoning change was denied by the planning commission, then the variance cases were not even heard.
Why is the zone, why was the zoning case denied? What basis did they?
Well, the argument from the neighbors is that there had not been a change in the character of the neighborhood. Now, essentially, what Mr. Thompson could have done, had he had two acres, is he could have gone in and developed the first two acres as the RV park and then come back later and argued that there had been a change in the character of the neighborhood. But you have to have at least two acres to have an RV park, and he didn't quite have that.
Okay.
So I take it the applicant is not here tonight?
No. And I, and I think he's, I've had conversations with him since the denial, and I think he's looking at other types of development that he could put on this property.
Thank you.
Anything else? Not, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the resolution as presented? It's approved on a seven oh vote. Thank you. That brings us to the next item, item F. The clerk would read item F, please.
Resolution approving the extension of the maturity date by one or more notes, series twenty-twenty-one, and the maximum amount of ten million dollars.
I'll move it.
It's a move by, a motion by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. Discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
I think this, we extended this one year. A bar lady could explain this to y'all. Extended to, uh, December of twenty-two.
That's correct. Our existing authority to borrow expires December fifteenth of this year, and the money that we have outstanding, which is about one point one million, would otherwise be due on December fifteenth.
And we change it-
Asking the council to extend that maturity date.
You change the raise from point six eight to one point oh four, that's the nineteen thousand eight hundred?
One point oh eight percent.
The, the new one. The old was six eight, point six eight, wasn't it? So that's the ex, the additional nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars.
I'm sorry?
That's the ex, the additional nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars as part of the increase of the-
No, that, that, the nineteen thousand eight hundred is the interest that is due on the existing notes on the day that we roll it over. Under the terms of the existing note, anytime you make a new draw or you renew it, you have to make an interest payment to catch that interest out.
That's strictly an interest payment.
But that interest payment is based on the old point six eight percent.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have nothing to add.
There, there being none, all in favor of the resolution as presented? Approved on a seven oh vote for the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item four G, a minor subdivision plot approval. If the clerk would read that item, please.
Resolution granting minor subdivision plot, flat, uh, plot approval for non-twenty-one Cedar Lake Road.
I'll move it.
There's a motion by Mr. Glavine. I'll second it. Mr. Glavine, any comments?
Yeah, I have a few. Uh, this, um, area, the corner of Cedar Lake and, uh, Pops Ferry is, uh, the site of a new restaurant called Slim Chickens. It, it's really a neat, neat restaurant concept, including, you know, of course, chicken and, chicken and waffles, and, uh, they specialize in a variety of milkshakes, uh, desserts, uh, and other specialties. I, I think it's a great addition to that corner. This, uh, measure, and I, I appreciate the council president allowing us to add this on. What, what has happened with this is they needed to submit a warranty deed, and, um, there was a formality with a legal form, a legal size form that they needed to, um, get this application in. Uh, otherwise, this would have went on the December twenty-first agenda, and it would delayed, uh, construction significantly. Uh, I believe after we, if we pass this, uh, you'll see construction begin very, very quickly. And it's just another step in the right direction to, uh, to get this business up and running.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. I have nothing to add. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the resolution as presented? Any opposed? It's approved on a seven oh vote. Thank you. This brings us to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
By Mr. Lawrence. Second by Mr. Gaines. We'll start with Mr. Lawrence. Any questions, uh, Mr. Lawrence, about any of these?
Yeah, the buffalo on C, Charlie. What does that, they, they give you permission to do?
Am I hearing Charlie?
Right.
I'll let Peter take that one.
Oh.
I don't know what kind of authority they actually giving you for that one.
This is a letter-
Where you going with this?
We received a letter from Attorney General Lynn Fitch stating that the, uh, state was engaged in a settlement of the opioid litigation, and that any cities that wish to join in, in doing so, there would be some future funds from that settlement going to the police departments for, for, uh, opioid-related programs. And so to share in the, uh, future settlement, this is a memorandum that the city is agreeing to do so, probably based on population of other cities.
So you put yourself in line and create some money, if it's possible.
That's right.
Save money for that.
Yes.
Okay, the next one is, uh, E. What's the city of DeIverville? What, what is this? Was this something we just created? This brand new? This is like-
The council has previously approved our submission of a grant, grant application to FEMA for the, their BRIC grant. It's an acronym that's Building Resilient Infrastructure. Um, you, you previously approved our, our submission of a grant. One of the things about the, the, um, grant is it's gonna, if we were to receive it, we gonna get, we get, um, funny, money for, um, design and environmental impact analysis. One of the things we'll have to look at is that if we build the Cedar Lake Bridge in the location that it's, that's being considered, we would need a little, uh, road between Biloxi and, um, and DeIverville, a little frontage road along I one ten. So this is just an MOU saying that we, if we get the grant, that, that we in the city of, of DeIverville would cooperate on developing that, that road.
That's how DeIverville comes into play, because of the road, connected road.
It's a road that will connect Cedar Lake Bridge to DeIverville.
Right.
A frontage road.
Say again. These, uh, two groups together, trying to figure out exactly what we're doing with the pass road and Rodenberg signal. You got R, S, and T.
Right, uh, councilman, you'll see R, S, and T, the same as U, V, and W. Um, typically, what we do is, uh, if we've, uh, have a new grant, that we establish a capital project, that we fund the capital project, and that we, if it's an MDOT project, then we activate it with the MDOT folks. So there's three different resolutions. And the first set, R, S, and T is for a mast arm, um, intersection. Mast arm being the, uh, unlike a hanging, uh, streetlight, it's got the big arms and much more resilient in storms. And, uh, we applied for three of those. They're about a half million dollars apiece. And, um, that includes acquiring some land around each one of the intersections. We, we received one of the three, so this is accepting the one at Rodenberg. We'll be able to submit for the others next year. The other, uh, the other U, V, and W is for a, um, traffic study for about six intersections in the Wool Market area, looking, looking at those, redesigning those intersections and making them more, more user-friendly to traffic. And, and just like the others, there's three inters, three, uh, resolutions, one setting up the capital project. It's a small eighty-twenty match. Both of these are eighty-twenty matches. So, and the, the most important of the three resolutions is the one acknowledging the requirement for a match.
And, um, the next one is Z. It seems like this, uh, Gulf Coast Community College sent some firemen there. This seemed to be a great program.
Chief Kaiser can take that one for me.
Oh, and I understand that you could actually do the policemen, accounting, engineers, a lot of people you could send-
Right, we actually get paid to train ourselves.
Correct, so it's a, it's a program that we had done before COVID. COVID, we kind of shut it down. Um, we're trying to get it started back up. The, the Gulf Coast Community College will basically reimburse us for all in-house training within the fire department. It'll reimburse us our instructor, uh, hourly rate. For instance, we've got an upcoming EMT class that we'll be teaching pretty much eight hours a day, six days a week to cover all of our, our students. And, uh, it'll approach around fifteen to twenty thousand dollars that we'll get reimbursed.
And how many people you had in that program?
The EMT program?
Yeah.
It pretty much, this, this workforce development program encompasses the whole department, but just for the EMT, we'll be training, uh, right around twenty of our firefighters, the, the new recruits, and then some of our, our current staff that's, uh, wanting to better their training.
That's a great program to take advantage of.
Yes, sir.
I heard that you, you could send a policeman for training. There's all kind of different training that you have. They said engineers, accounting, not just you, I mean, everybody. Looked like we could use that program a lot for training the personnel, so they're boxing. It's a good thing, especially being, being reimbursed like that, that's pretty good.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. On, uh, Mike on JJ, uh, they did a revised bid. How'd that work?
With, uh- JJ, is, uh, Walt in, in the room? You want to take that, Walt? You, you negotiated the change.
Could you repeat the question, councilman?
Yeah, I said it did a revised bid. How do we do a revised bid? Back with them.
Well, it was more of a negotiated agreement. We, the contractor, uh, we had three bids come in, uh, and, uh-